Meeting for Monday, March 4th, 2013. I'd call the meeting to order and ask everyone to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio of "Oh, Canada" and to the National Film Board for the images of our country. I would move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for those minutes? Thank you, Councilor Gustafson.
Thank you. I'll move the minutes of the city council meeting held February 19th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Anything out of place? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that takes us to the adoption of the agenda. Councilor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move-
Council adopt agenda.
Just your microphone out there.
Thank you again. I move council adopt agenda as presented with the addition of 8.4 aquatera appointment.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing later on tonight. So is there anybody that would like to come forward to address council on any community-related matter? I'll ask one more time if there's anybody that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. Mr. Rossler, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Alderman. Just here on behalf of, it's kind of an odd situation, is an item on your agenda tonight, the Northridge outline plan adoption, which is being adopted by resolution solely due to the fact that there's no land use bylaw changes or anything. However, there was a fairly substantial amount of planning and engineering effort put into this, into this report. So just thought we'd offer the opportunity to answer any questions if there were any on that report.
Sure. Thanks. I see Councilor Rice, I understand what you're saying. It is sort of a planning document, but not one that's subject of a public hearing. So this would be the only opportunity for you to come forward and answer any questions or make any comments. So, Councilor Rice?
You had some input that there is some concern on the increase in traffic that will result on 124th Avenue between 102nd and 103rd Street. And the neighborhood was asking that a fence be placed along there, both to mitigate the noise and to also create a safety barrier. Is that something that you or the developer had ever discussed?
Ms. Rossler?
Not something that we have discussed at this point. That's between 102nd and 103rd is, there probably, very likely would be a fence constructed adjacent to 102nd, just as a noise attenuation measure, I guess. There had, we're not, generally that's done at a detailed engineering stage, so we haven't-
In case you're not saying it's out of the question, you're saying it hadn't been discussed up till now?
No, has not been.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any further questions, I guess? Ms. Rossler, do you want to give a, just sort of, and we may end up asking administration the same thing later on, but do you want to give an overview of your perspective of the changes?
Yeah, we can, for sure. Absolutely. And obviously, there's, so I'll be repeating a little bit of what your planning administration will, will be talking about later on. But essentially, we were working into the next phases of the Northridge development, and it's become apparent that, you know, through the years, this was adopted in 2006 initially, there's been some fairly substantial changes to city standards and planning guidelines for, for the city. One of them's been kind of the, some issues around parking around with lanes and congestion issues and whatnot, and areas like that. Also, not contemplated with the Northridge outline plan was the volume of traffic that was going to be on 102nd Street. I think initially that was designated as an arterial, and it was revised at a later date to, to be a collector. So with that all being said, we, we tried to get as much of the vehicular traffic and, and driveway accesses and whatnot off of that fairly major roadway. So the new plan allows that, all the transportation work and whatnot to be internal to the subdivision rather than, rather than accessing 102nd Street directly. We looked at servicing sanitary sewer waters and storm sewer, and there was very negligible impacts, I guess, to that. So therefore, we thought this was a viable option. It just allows for a little more efficient layout and, and works a little better for the, the neighborhood.
Great. Great. Thanks very much. I see Council Rice.
In the, in the package we have before us, it refers to map one and, or attachment one and attachment two, but I only have attachment one. And then that would be, attachment one would be the existing roadways, and attachment two would be the proposed roadways. But there's no attachment two.
Yeah, so I'm looking at that page, and there, it looks like it's just a typo here. So the, the original outline plan is the doc, is the-
Top and then the bottom.
On the left, and then on the right hand, or maybe it's top and bottom for you. On the right-hand side is the new, the new layout.
Yeah, it's the top and bottom.
So they combine the two attachments into one?
Oh, I see. Okay.
No, you got, sorry guys, you aren't far enough along in your document package.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, were there any other questions or comments from Mr. Rossler? If not, thanks very much for coming forward. I appreciate sort of being on the schedule of this, of the agenda this time. I just wanted, if I can add a comment, I think in addition to creating sort of a better access along 102nd, or improved access for the amount of traffic that's there, I think the changes, which sort of seemed to me to fit a little bit with the city's concept of a modified grid, really create a much more walkable neighborhood with the more accesses out for people who are choosing to walk, and more direct paths. So I really appreciate those changes as well. Thanks very much. You. Okay. So is there anybody else that would like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter? And I see one more that, on further consideration, is going to choose to come forward.
Go ahead.
Mr. Freezen. Sure. I see Council Rice has declared a conflict of interest, and we'll leave council chambers. Mr. Freezen.
My name is Harold Freezen. I'm the Chair of the Downtown Association, and thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm here to present the budget for the Downtown Association, which I think you all have. First of all, I just want to say thank you to, to the mayor and to councilors. We get a lot of support from you, and it doesn't go unappreciated. Just things like showing up at our AGM, sitting on our board, that is very much appreciated. The budget that we've set for this year, we do have a slight increase, but we've kept it very low. It's at 2.4%. The budget has been sent to all the members of the Downtown Association. It was passed unanimously at our AGM on February 27th, and to our knowledge, there were, there was no feedback from the membership on this budget. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Freezen? Seeing none, then it looks like there aren't. This will come up on our agenda shortly, and so you're, of course, as you probably know, more than welcome to stay.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight. Let Councilor Rice back into council chambers. We'll do one, one last call, if there's anybody else that would like to come forward to address council on any community-related matter. It looks like there isn't anybody else that's going to make a move to the front tonight, so we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to public hearings and bylaw C-1100-189, the land use bylaw amendment. I would call the public hearing to order and look for an introduction from administration. Excuse me, Councilor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I have to declare a conflict on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Conflict, Councilor Wong declares a conflict of interest, and we'll leave the council chambers. And we'll look to Mr. Johnson, I believe, for an introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Planning staff has received an application from Bruce Baristo on behalf of the owner of the subject property. The subject property is located, oops. That's not my screen. No. There we go. Thank you. Okay. So bylaw C-1100-189 is an application to rezone the subject property. The subject property is 9812 108th Avenue. It's located in the VLA Montrose area. It's shown on the map on screen there. This is an aerial photo highlighting the same property. Google Street View image. The land has been vacant for a number of years. The, the property is currently zoned RR, Restricted Residential, and the proposal is to rezone it to RSR, Restricted Small Lot Residential. And the purpose of the amendment is to allow for the lot to be subdivided. When the VLA Montrose Area Redevelopment Plan was adopted in 2009, this portion of 108th Avenue was identified for intensification by allowing subdivision to create smaller lots. So this is a future land use development concept that is shown in the VLA ARP, Area Redevelopment Plan, and this is the policy that accompanies it. The, the main point here is this classification allows for the subdivision of single detached residential lots along 108th Avenue to allow for two small lot, single detached dwellings. The application was circulated to all adjacent property owners, and at the time of writing the report, no concerns were received. Staff's recommendation to council is to give bylaw C-1100-189 second and third readings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Opportunity for questions of administration? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To Mr. Johnson, Joe, a question I have, the VLA Montrose area, it's just along 108th, like going south, it's not included. You're only talking small lots on that area, and where are they going to park? In the back alley?
Mr. Johnson?
The area that's being referred to as the VLA Montrose area is everything that's shown in this development concept, this being 104th Avenue, and the very north end being the alley behind this 111th Avenue Crescent. So the entire area is covered by that plan. Just this portion of 108th Avenue was policy created to allow for the subdivision of larger lots into narrower lots. Part of the policy of this rezoning is that at the time of subdivision and development permit, the city may require that the properties be accessed from the rear lane. So as per our land use bylaw, there'd be onsite parking that would be required, and most likely in this case, it would be off the rear lane. There is a rear lane in this, in this area.
Okay. So it's just that one area on 108th North, and so the grader's going to be going down there a few times a year for sure, because the parking's going to be in that rear access mostly. Likely getting the front. I know it's a main bus route in front of it, but, you know, you're going to be saying, okay, development, go ahead, but are we going to have it properly graded? Just a question wherever that goes.
It's my understanding that the snow removal crews do a fairly decent job of clearing the lanes.
They do, but not back alleys. That's what I'm very concerned about.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much. Mr. Johnson, Councilor Rice?
That's a fairly, like that area is, other than that one lot, quite developed. So it, it seems strange that we would take a chunk of frontage to widen the road on one piece of property when it, it would be very difficult on the rest of the block.
Mr. Johnson?
At the time of subdivision, well, actually, I can point to the policy right here. At the time of subdivision, the city may require that additional land be dedicated to the city for the widening of 108th Avenue. I don't believe it's an absolutely, it's an absolute given. So the applicant will be following up with a subdivision application. At that time, our administration would determine whether or not it would be appropriate to take additional road widening for 108th Avenue. But if, if the city did do that, I don't think it would be noticeable in that your, your front property line is, it's already set back quite a ways anyway, so it'd likely be still usable yard, and everything would look normal. But in the future, if the city did need to use it, then it would, they would change the front yard. But I don't, I don't think that that's happening in this case.
But the plans would have to be such, when he submits his plans, that they didn't build in that area.
That's right, but I don't think that that would happen anyhow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for administration? Okay. If not, then we'd, Councilor Rice?
Oh, no, I thought you were closing here.
Nope. We still have the presentation submission portion of the public hearing, so this is an opportunity for anybody in the community that would like to come forward and speak to this matter, the proposed rezoning. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community that would like to speak to this rezoning and present a view either in favor or opposed, to come forward. I don't see anybody making their way forward, or maybe I do. So I'd ask you to come forward and introduce yourself at the microphone, and please be welcome.
Mayor, councilors, my name is Glenn Penner, and I'm the developer of the land.
Thank you.
Bruce wasn't able to make it today, so he asked me to stop by and answer any questions that any other councilors or yourself may have.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Penner? Councilor McLean? Steve?
Yeah. Thank you. To Mr. Penner, I understand where the area is. I frequent that area quite a while. What I'm worried about in the city is we get a lot of small lots, new subdivisions, but anytime we have a lot, say in the VLA Montrose area, which one of our main bigger lot areas, to build a bungalow, they're disappearing, smaller, that's just, we'll add that, we'll add that, and pretty soon, where do we put a nice bungalow? So I'm very worried about the parking, and in the wintertime, and grading. I know their snow removal does a great job on the main roads, but I'm not so convinced in the rear access. So as you build it, you're going to build two lots, two buildings, I imagine, or, and you're going to sell them and move on, but I'm worried about afterwards, so.
Mr. Penner, do you want to speak maybe to the lot layout and, or access?
Yeah. Yeah. Or my purpose is to actually build two single dwelling units on there. I have traveled the, the lot or the back lane access here this last year, since the purchase of the lot, and it has been fairly decently graded back there. So it would be just a matter of being able to shovel off the, the parking at that spot as well. So that'd be the only concern that I would have too, with the snow removal on, on the lot itself. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Penner, one, one question I had going through was, is, do you have, I don't know if you have a diagram showing your proposed lot layout or any renderings of the buildings, it's not a requirement, but it's something that-
I think I might have the subdivision portion of it, yes.
There's actually a camera up above, so you can even lay it face up on the counter there or on the desk. Oh, okay. I'm just hearing that that camera doesn't work anymore.
No, it worked at that.
Thank goodness for getting that fixed. Well, I'm, I'm hearing now from our staff that that camera's not working, so I don't, would you mind, could you hand it around briefly?
Sure.
I don't know if you'd like to speak maybe a little bit to the sort of, what you intend to do with the fit and finish of the house or the-
Well, under the, the current regulations with the VLA Montrose, it's, it's pretty clearly defined what it is that we need to put on there. The, the buildout, I guess with the living room areas will be cladded in brick. The recessed areas, the decks and the porches will be made out of a hardy plank siding, and then the rest of it is, is the vinyl siding that would be allowed, as per the agreements with the VLA plan at the moment.
Great. Thanks very much. That's a great description. I see maybe a question for Councilor Rice?
Yeah, you don't happen to have a picture of how the two residences are going to interface on the lot?
Not at this time.
Okay. That's-
Is that what?
Okay. Thanks. Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions. I'll make sure that your documents get back around to you.
Okay.
Apologize for the camera.
That's okay.
Thanks very much for making yourself available to speak to this.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward to speak in favor or opposed to this application, rezoning? I don't see anybody else coming forward, so I'll just call one third and final time. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll ask for one final round of questions, if council had any. I don't see any, and so we'll close, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising from the public hearing. Councilor Rice?
I would move second reading of bylaw C-1100-189. And in speaking to it, I think when we did the VLA plan, the ARP, it was probably one of the most intensively studied by the residents of the area, who agreed that if we kept the south of 108th Avenue a single-family residential, it would make more sense to do these small lots on the north. And so that's, that was something that was discussed and passed in that plan.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So motion for second reading. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Look for motion for third reading. Councilor Rice?
I move third reading of bylaw C-1100-189.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on third reading of this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That is all the business arising from this public hearing. We could ask Councilor Wong back in, and we move on to item 6.2, bylaw C-1066-07 and bylaw C-1100-187. I'd call the public hearing for these two items to order, and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration has received an application to amend the Southwest Area Structure Plan, amend the Stone Ridge Outline Plan, and amend the Land Use Bylaw. The application was submitted on, by Focus Corporation, and the proposed amendments address the redesignation of a multifamily site to commercial use. The subject property will front along 68th Avenue and Stone Ridge Way. It's currently an area that's undeveloped. The map above shows where we're talking here. Just zooming in a little bit, this is the development concept from the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. Pardon the name up here, it's since been changed to Stone Ridge. I accidentally pulled from an older document. The development concept for the area as it currently stands in the outline plan has the subject property, shown highlighted in red here, as future medium density or multifamily residential. This is also a multifamily residential property, as is this. And then this is a commercial designation here. The proposal is to change this property from medium density residential to commercial. The applications were, or the application and bylaws were circulated to all adjacent property owners, signs posted on the property and newspaper advertisements, and at time of writing the report, we had not received any responses to that public notification. Just zooming in, showing the tentative lotting of the area. And due to the fact that there's no change in the lotting or servicing for the area, administration does not see any introduced challenges in terms of servicing, or snow clearing, or walkability, or any of those things. It's simply a matter of changing land use. We, there are no site servicing capacity issues in terms of water and sanitary. And the Stone Ridge Outline Plan contains a variety of land uses. The area is well-served, or will be well-served, in terms of commercial developments, a broad range of residential densities. And if approved, it is our opinion that the proposed redesignation will not introduce any land use compatibility issues. Administration's recommendation is that council give bylaw C-1066-07 second and third readings, amend the Stone Ridge Outline Plan by resolution, and give bylaw C-1100-187 second and third reading.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for administration at this point? Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to ask a question to Joe, I don't know if it's Joe or to the surveyor. I know it's behind Starbucks, there's a fence, and most of its panel's been kicked out. So what's going to be for the divider between, I think it's a great idea, the commercial spot there, but what's the divider from there to the house? Because to me, it doesn't really seem to be fitting on the other side, the wood, like, especially at the couple homes. So is there going to be a wooden fence that can be kicked out, or is it going to be something different there? Diver.
Mr. Johnson?
I believe the land use bylaw specifies that there is to be a six-foot-high solid fence between the commercial development and adjacent residential properties, so I would expect that that would likely be the case, similar to what you've seen in other properties.
Thanks for that, Mr. Johnson.
I don't know, I just want to say, I don't know if the fence on this type of developments, a wooden fence, is appropriate. Maybe there's some new design we'd be told about or something, because we see it happening time and time again of it getting smashed down and broke for a passageway to get in and out, and kids just whatever. I'm just wondering if there's some other way. Look forward to asking for the questions on it.
Council Rice?
And just maybe in response to Council McLean, I would love it if you would refer that to the Community Growth Committee. We won't allow frost fences, it's our rule.
Sure. Sorry. So just want to make sure we're talking, asking questions of administration.
Okay.
We can certainly have debate when we get to second reading.
So Mr., my question then to Mr. Johnson. So certainly, that's something that we could look at, an amendment to the bylaw to look at different types of fencing.
Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely, yes. Land use bylaws currently under review, so.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Johnson? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Mr. Johnson, I've got one for you. The proposed zoning is to commercial service. Can you speak to the types of uses that are there? I guess I'm, I'm wondering what types of, yeah, what types of services or what types of businesses would be allowed in this, and why, why this would be CS versus CL, which is commercial local.
Well, I don't actually have my land use bylaw in front of me to answer what the uses are, but you are correct in that the CS district is, it does have a lot more options in terms of use for, for commercial uses. CL is a less intense commercial district.
Would it be fair to say that CS provides the greatest range of flexibility for the developer or for the, of potential businesses?
It, it does, for sure, yes. It is, it's a fair statement.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. If there are no further questions for administration, then we would move on to the delegation, presentation submission portion of the open house.
Just maybe in response to Council McLean, I would love it if you would refer that to the Community Growth Committee. We won't allow frost fences, it's our rule.
Sorry, so I just want to make sure we're talking, asking questions of administration.
Okay.
We can certainly have debate when we get to second reading.
So my question then to Mr. Johnson. So certainly that's something that we could look at, an amendment to the bylaw to look at different types of fencing.
Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely, yes. Land use bylaws currently under review, so.
Any further questions for Mr. Johnson? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Mr. Johnson, I've got one for you. The proposed zoning is to commercial service. Can you speak to the types of uses that are there? I guess I'm, I'm wondering what types of, yeah, what types of services or what types of businesses would be allowed in this? And why, why this would be CS versus CL, which is commercial, local?
Well, I don't actually have my land use bylaw in front of me to answer what the uses are, but you are correct in that the CS district is, it does have a lot more options in terms of use for, for commercial uses. CL is a less intense commercial district.
Would it be fair to say that CS provides the greatest range of flexibility for the developer or for the, of potential businesses?
It, it does for sure, yes. It is, that's a fair statement.
Okay, okay, thank you. If there are no further questions for administration, then we would move on to the delegation presentation submission portion of the open house, of the, excuse me, of the public hearing. And look to see if there's anybody that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of the application. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward and speak? Oh, you're familiar. Mr. Ross?
Mayor Given, Alderman. Again, I'm here on behalf of the developer, potential lands for this public hearing and rezoning. Just to speak to a couple of the kind of issues that we've run into through this process. I mean, the intention for this rezoning, obviously just to do with the fact that this is a, with the East Link Center being constructed on 68th Ave. Obviously, there's a fairly high demand for commercial, commercial land there. And there's a fairly, fairly intensive population density around there, so there is a lot of multifamily already in the area. So this was a, just more of a market reaction than anything. As far as the uses and whatnot, again, CS does provide a little broader range of, of land uses. And because it is across from a multifamily site and only adjacent to a single residential lot, that was, seemed reasonable. We didn't want to go as far as anything like CA or anything more intense, which would allow for a more industrial-type, heavier commercial district. So if there are any questions surrounding that, that you have for myself, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, let's see, Council Rice in the queue?
We have the difficulty with another high school in proximity to a major arterial in terms of danger of the students crossing to access the commercial area. Have you looked at how this commercial site would interface with the planned signalization?
We have not. There was a traffic impact assessment completed as part of this, so I don't, I'm not 100% sure whether this is a planned signalized location under the city's LEVE program. This has already been developed, so this essentially was developed as a multifamily type of site. So with the adjacent commercial, that would have been taken into consideration at that time as well. I'm unaware of any specific study for, for this rezoning, so.
Okay, traffic impact study, does it also address pedestrian traffic?
This would have been just an update to the existing Grand Bank Stone Ridge development, so they generally do.
Okay, thank you.
I see Council McLean in the queue?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of questions. I know now you're looking for the change, rezoning. You've already built the fence there that's been put up for a divider. Question I have, would you have any issues going to community growth? And about that divider between the commercial unit and between the residential lot? I mean, besides just a wooden fence, or what kind of ideas can be brought forward to maybe help change the way maybe it's been done? Maybe it won't change, but I, I'm for this, but I'm worried about that divider, the resident and commercial.
And that's, that's something that typically would be dealt with through the development permit. That there's a, obviously, we don't, aren't aware of who's going to purchase that lot and who will be developing it. There is options there, so depending on where the buildings are situated and whatnot, I mean, we could end up with a building backing onto that side yard. And it's, you know, being that it is a single side yard, obviously, there will be something there. It's just a little bit dependent on what the development actually looks like as far as what would happen there. So, I mean, there's a multitude of possibilities, I guess, something that generally would be dealt with by building services and the development permit, so.
I'm just, the question I have, Mayor, is this, it's changing to commercial from, I don't know, condos, apartment buildings, whatever was planned there, and then the housing. So it's going right to retail, commercial, which is great, but it's going to change the dynamics in the evenings and, so. So I want to pass this tonight, but I want to know that that's going to be brought to community growth, Mayor, if that can be done, because it's changing it tonight. If it's voted on, this is going to change, and I think we have to worry about that, so. And if we don't, it passes, then nothing, worry about that, we'll worry about the next one.
Thanks, Council McLean. Were there any further questions for the delegation? Don't see anybody else ringing in. Mr. Ross, thanks very much for presenting tonight. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak to this, to this proposal? Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and address council on this, on this matter? Seeing none, then I'll close the, close the public hearing and look for a motion. Council Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move second reading of bylaw C. 1066-07, Southwest Area Structure Plan Amendment. And in speaking to that, I believe that the CS district is consistent with the adjacent commercial properties that are there. They're all zoned CS. The replacement of the medium-density residential is not a concern to me, because there's plenty of MR or RM district in that area. So we will see a lot of density develop there. It's really nice to see that kind of development on that side of the town. I think it's really important now that we have some really good commercial establishments set up and our multiplex and schools that are either in place or under construction. So really encourage council to vote in favor of this.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Council O'Toole?
Yes, I'll be voting for it. I feel that the commercial development would be an enhancement to the neighborhood down the road. And depending on what goes in there, of course, but I feel that that's kind of how the city's going forward, and I don't want to slow it down.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Council McLean?
Ah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be voting for it. But if no changes to maintenance, a wooden fence, and they're all kicked out in two years, well, hopefully, we'll have something to community growth to maybe look at changes down the road.
So, Council McLean, I think we need to be clear on that point. As was noted, the type of fence around a property actually would be decided at the development permitting stage. When somebody comes and says, "This is what I want to build on this site," is when the city has the opportunity to say what type of landscaping and fencing requirements we'd have. So this is about zoning, and zoning doesn't impact the type of fencing material. So if that's something that you would like to look at, then obviously, any council member can refer any matter to any standing committee at any point. And then we would have that discussion there and see if it's something that the rest of council members want to support or follow up on, so. I see Council Rice?
Okay, don't want to get off track, because I know this is a zoning thing, but I don't think there's any choice. It's a, land use bylaw specifies a wooden fence. It's our rules, not theirs. And so we would have to look at amending the bylaws, got nothing to do with the developer.
I'm saying a development permitting stage is where that would come forward.
No, you'd have to amend the bylaw before that. Okay.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion for second reading carries. Council Wong, do you care to make a motion for third reading?
Yes, I'll move third reading of bylaw C. 1066-07.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Wong. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So that takes us to...
Three more motions on that same one.
Oh, yes. Thanks very much, Council Wong. Good catch, there's a couple of different parts. Okay, Council Wong?
So I'll continue. I move that council approve amendments to OP-0702B, the Stone Ridge Outline Plan.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. So a motion to approve the amendments to the outline plan. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Wong?
I'll move second reading of bylaw C. 1100-187, the land use bylaw amendment.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the bylaw amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Wong?
And finally, I'll, I move that council give third reading to bylaw C. 1100-187.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that finally amended all the plans that we had to amend to get that piece of business done. And that finishes all of our public hearings for tonight and takes us into unfinished business in item 7.1. Council Rice? Council Rice is declaring conflict of interest for items 7.1 and 7.2. And could we have a motion on either of those items, council? Excuse me, on 7.1. Council Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council give second reading to bylaw C. 801E to amend the BRZ bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. So if memory serves, this is the amendment that would allow a member of the public to sit on the, the general public to sit on the Downtown Association Board, without the requirement that they be a downtown business owner. So the intent was to get more public input through the Downtown Association's process, and this amendment to the bylaw would allow that to happen. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Council Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move that council give third reading to bylaw C. 801E to amend the BRZ bylaw.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And item 7.2, Council Gustafson, do you want to carry on with the Downtown Association?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the 2013 Downtown, Downtown Association budget as presented today.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. I would note that council in their agenda package did receive one piece of correspondence that had some concerns with the budget. But that was the only piece of correspondence received on the, on this item. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that handles both of those two items of business. Councilor Crokin, could you let Council Rice back in? And that moves us to item 8.1 in the report section. The North Ridge Outline Plan, which we heard a little bit about before, but if we could have an introduction from administration. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Helix Engineering, on behalf of the developer, has submitted an application to amend the North Ridge Outline Plan to change the road and lot configuration in the eastern part of the outline plan area. The outline plan area is shown in red, just to give council some orientation to the area here. The entire plan area is bound on the east side by 102nd Street, on the west by the Royal Oaks North and Royal Oaks Neighborhood, and to the north by 132nd Avenue. Again, the plan outline, the outline plan boundary is shown in red, which includes an area that is already quite built out and an area that has a lot of currently undeveloped land. The area affected by the amendment is highlighted in this blue, by this blue line here. This screen shows the before and after, if you will, of the outline plan area. This is the existing concept in the approved outline plan. The most notable feature of this outline plan, or this development concept that was eliminated by the revision, is that it has a number of lots between this road here and the beginning of this cul-de-sac here, where the properties actually front onto 102nd Street. They would be serviced by a rear lane, which would provide the driveway opportunities. And there would be no driveways off of these lots onto 102nd Street. But the property itself, the lot, the house, everything would front onto 102nd Street, and most likely, there'd be a lot of vehicles parking on the street. The applicant felt that it was more desirable to have all of those lots fronting inwards and toward the neighborhood. And administration agreed that since the time of adopting this plan, the 102nd Street's nature has changed somewhat from what was envisioned. It was envisioned to act more like a collector roadway, but given the volumes and, yeah, given the traffic volumes, it's, it is behaving a little bit more like an arterial. So perhaps fronting residential properties onto it may not be appropriate. And as Mayor Given noted earlier, the revisions do create somewhat more of a modified grid scenario as opposed to somewhat dead ends with crescents and cul-de-sacs and whatnot. So all in all, there, this does not introduce any issues in terms of, you know, an undesirable road layout or servicing issues or, or anything. Administration feels that it's an appropriate revision. And we encourage council to amend the North Ridge Outline Plan by resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Questions for administration? Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Mr. Johnson, the parking on 102nd Street, so now that we're going to be having no driveways onto 102nd Street, will there be no parking allowed whatsoever on 102nd?
Mr. Johnson?
I don't think that we, we are actually going to go that far as to restrict parking. The option is there if, in the future, but I do not believe we have any plans on doing that. There is, there will be commercial uses on the east side that will obviously be required to provide their own parking, but they may also utilize the on-street parking as well. And, and in some ways, on-street parking in this, in this road might be okay, because it might prove somewhat of a traffic calming measure, so.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I just noticed that there's already quite a bit of congestion with parking in front of the apartment buildings, just to the south of them. And, but I guess if it's an option for the future, if we see it as an issue, we can always change that.
Thank you. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Joe, to the top of the map, do we have any exits or accesses or egresses onto either 132 or 102 Street, 132nd or 102?
We, there are no accesses from this plan area to 132nd Avenue. The only access to 132nd is 102nd Street itself. And then I'll just highlight the accesses. They are the same in both concepts. They're here, 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 and here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Crokin. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a question regarding bus transit. Is there going to be transit stops along that area in the future? Maybe you're not able to answer that question.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'd be guessing at best, so.
Thank you. Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So basically, from the change in the outline, you're not going to have driveways coming onto 102nd anymore?
We will not.
Okay. That's, that's very positive. Now, on this map here, Joe, where's Inverness Estates, which I consider a class building in the city? Right there? Okay.
Right here, yeah.
What I'm wondering about Inverness Estate is, and it is a class building, the people that developed it built parking underneath the building. It's concrete, I helped build part of it, and you don't see too many in the city. So when you hear about parking issues, they've actually taken care of those issues by actually implementing parking underneath the building, a lot of it. So what would be, you know, between that building, and saying, build whatever building, it's not underground parking and just throwing together framing, a divider for its residents down the road? And you say you're going to still have parking on that main street. I, I don't get that. But anyways, so what, what, between that building and what's going to happen here? Is there going to be any changes, or?
So, Council McLean, just to be clear, what's your, what's your question?
Well, I'm wondering about that roadway, Inverness Estates, like what's going on down there? Yeah, because I don't see the whole map up there.
Well, there...
I'm for the, how it's going about, but I'm wondering about some issues of parking and, and some issues relating to the Inverness.
Can you clarify what your issues are?
Yeah, is there any complaints by anybody near the area residents? And that, that's a class building that was built, so let's just...
That doesn't sound like an issue. That sounds like a compliment.
It's a very good compliment.
What are your, what are your issues that you'd like to ask?
My issue is, if there's complaints in that area before construction, has, have they been looked at and how, how they're going to be received and done?
Has administration received any complaints about this proposed change?
Administration did receive a couple of letters, which I believe were received after, or one was received prior to the report being submitted and one was received after. There are, they were both from owners of property in the Inverness development. Their, their letters discuss a desire for uniform fencing along the... Their, their letters discuss a desire for uniform fencing along the rear property boundaries of the, if this, if this revision were approved, these would be rear property lines fronting on one hundred and second. They expressed a desire for uniform fencing along that stretch, as well as, there's a comment that the, sorry, I'm just trying to find a better map. They, they claim that one hundred and tw- twenty-fourth Avenue will have high traffic volumes, and there's a request for restricted parking, or no. They requested one hundred and twenty-fourth allow for on-street parking along this stretch. Both of those issues in, well, the one hundred and twenty-fourth Street parking request in administration's opinion is, you know, outside of the subject of this amendment. And the, the fencing along one hundred and second street, the city does not have requirements for uniform fencing where rear lots back onto roadways, but typically a developer does do that for their own marketing wishes, I guess, if you will.
Okay. I also see the acting director of community safety may have some comment on that. Chris?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Counselor McLean, just to answer your question in regard to Inverness, I have, in my role as enforcement services manager, worked with a number of residents at Inverness around some concerns they had regarding traffic on one oh two street. And I, I think a lot of the concerns that they've raised to me in the past are addressed in the proposed layout with Northridge. Their concern primarily being vehicles parked on one oh two street and maybe some obstruction of sightlines related to turning onto one oh two street from those adjacent roads. Additionally, there is some common measures in place. There is parking restrictions already existing on certain portions of one oh two street, including on the east side of the road from Inverness. So a lot of that stuff you had mentioned is actually already in place.
Counselor Monroe?
Oh, I'm not done yet, Mayor. I got one more question.
Oh, sure. You can come after Counselor Monroe.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Actually, Mayor, Mayor Given, I was just going to move the recommendation, but I'll, I'll wait until later.
Okay. Further questions? Counselor McLean?
So, I understand the fence, it makes sense for a developer to do that, but is there a fence going to be going, I guess you say, east and west, Joe? Has that been implemented? When you build buildings like this in a community, you should work with them. That, that's one of the class buildings in the city, Inverness.
Mr. Johnson, can you speak to the differences at the south end of the development that are being proposed?
Yeah, I guess if you look at the concept before and after here, there are no differences on the very south end of the concept. It really begins, I guess, right here, where instead of having a lane come in and service, the road jogs over this way. So the adjacent property, or Inverness here, does not see a change in what would be built in this area, whether or not council approves this amendment.
Okay. Counselor McLean, do you have anything further? Okay. Counselor Monroe, did you want to make the motion?
Sure. Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'll, I'll move that the Northridge Outline Plan be amended by replacing maps four through twelve with new maps four through twelve attached as attachment two, replacing tables two and three with new tables two and three attached as attachment three, and changing section three point one to read, all lots on the east side of the plan area will back onto one oh two streets, and no driveway access onto one oh two street will be permitted. And just to speak briefly to this, Mayor Given, I think that the changes are for the better. Having driveway access onto one oh two street, I think, would be, as, as Joe had indicated, it's become basically an arterial road, and having that access would be problematic. We've seen that down in the area of one hundredth Avenue in between eighty-eighth Street and ninety-sixth Avenue, or eighty-eighth Avenue, ninety, eighty-eighth Street and ninety-sixth Street. So I, I think, I think that this is important, that we make these changes. I think the other thing as well is that one hundred and twenty-fourth Avenue cut through there. I mean, that's always been in the plans and the developments to be completed, and, you know, as far as erecting a fence, I think that that's something that can be done at any point throughout, so, thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Monroe, Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to speak in support of the amendments. I believe in the same tune as Counselor Monroe, that these amendments are for the better. Never been a fan of properties with rear lanes. I think that the city has a hard time managing them. They don't always work. We have some of them. Having that choice of development in the city is a good idea, but I think we're going to start planning away from that because it's just one extra road that the city is responsible to clear, and the residents never end up using it. In terms of the on-street parking along one hundred and second, I see nothing wrong with that. That's the type of parking that you can take away later, and no one will really argue against you because it's not at the front of their house where they access their properties.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and finishes, completes item eight point one, and takes us on to item eight point two, which has a number of bylaw amendments. Maybe we could get an introduction from administration?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration has received an application to amend the Southwest Area Structure Plan, which would be bylaw C ten sixty-six oh six. Adopt a new outline plan, which will be titled O'Brien Lake West, and will be adopted as a bylaw as opposed to by resolution. That will be bylaw C twelve seventy-nine, as well as a rezoning application, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, and that will be bylaw C eleven hundred one eighty-eight. The subject property is shown on the screens behind you. It basically is to the west and south of the existing O'Brien Lake Outline Plan area. The air photo to show you again where it is. And administration's recommendation is that council give the bylaws first reading and establish Monday, April first, as the date of public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. So this motion for first reading and date, time, and location, I believe, Counselor Rice?
I would move first reading of bylaw C ten sixty-six dash oh six. Do you want separate motions for both the bylaws? Yes, okay. Ten sixty-six oh six.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I've moved first reading of bylaw C twelve seventy-nine, the O'Brien Lake West Outline Plan bylaw.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rice. I'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. One more, Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C one one zero zero one eight eight, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. And motion for first reading on that land use bylaw amendment, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And Counselor Rice, would you care to set date, time, and location for those three?
Can one date be set for all three, or do we need, okay?
I think they'll go in concerts.
Okay, I move, I move that Monday, April first, 2013, at six thirty P M. at City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for public hearing purposes for bylaw C ten sixty-six oh six, C twelve seventy-nine, and C one one zero zero one eight eight.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So those first motions to introduce the topic, and then the introduction of date, time, and location allows for a period of public advertising before we have second and third reading. Any discussion on, as to date, time, and location of those proposed public hearings? Counselor Wong?
Just a question, I, I know that that's an, that's Easter Monday. Do we technically take that day off, or council is regular?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Just wanted to check.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate? Questions or comments about date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and takes us to item eight point three, bylaw C eleven hundred dash one nine three. Mr. McIntyre, I see a switch of the seats. If you'd like to turn on your microphone and give us a brief introduction?
Mayor Given, this amendment item is following from council's decision to update its standing committee's bylaw, and to rename Public Works Committee to Community Growth Committee. And the substantive effect of this amendment is to recognize that Public Works Committee under the land use bylaw has development permitting authority, and for dealing with major variances and discretionary uses. Consequently, an amendment to the land use bylaw text is, is appropriate to reflect that, that change in name. Consequently, the recommendation is that bylaw C eleven hundred one ninety-three be given first reading, and Monday, April first, 2013, at six thirty P M. at City Council Chambers be established as a date, time, and location for public hearing purposes.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. McIntyre. Counselor Crokin?
I was just going to move it.
Sure. And so, just, just to be clear, so essentially, we changed the, changed the name of one of our committees, and now we have to make sure that the bylaw that refers to that committee has the correct name in it. That's right?
Precisely.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I move the council approve bylaw C, or give C, bylaw C eleven hundred dash one ninety-three being an amendment to the land use bylaw be given first reading.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So motion for first reading, there's no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
And further move, Monday, April first, 2013, at six thirty P M. City Council Chambers be established as a date, time, and location for public hearing purposes.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Any discussion as to date, time, and location of that proposed public hearing? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that brings us to our additional agenda item, item eight point four. Counselor Rice?
I would move that council approve the appointment of Darlene Hawes to the Board of Aqua Terra for a two-year term, expiring at the annual meeting in 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Just to speak briefly to the motion, this is to fill a vacancy on the Aqua Terra Board as one board member left. Appointments to the Aqua Terra Board are done by unanimous consent of all three shareholders, the city, the county, and the town of Sexmouth. This nominee has been circulated amongst the three board members, and, or the three shareholders, and there was concurrence that Ms. Hawes would be a welcome addition to the board, and so certainly appreciate that motion and, and council's support. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and I believe that finishes all of our report items and takes us into our regular committee business. And we'll start off with the Public Works Committee, and Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held on February nineteenth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did we notice anything out of order in the minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you. I'll move the council approve an increase in scope and fees for I S L engineering and land services in the amount of ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, excluding GST, for the 2012, 2014 traffic signal repair and tra- and replacement programs.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Well, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. We did a couple sign permits and a dog grooming home occupation permit. I'd just like to highlight that that was the last Public Works Committee meeting in, in the history of the city of Grand Prairie, so.
You mean for now?
For now. Other than that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Sure. Any questions for Counselor Gustafson? Seeing nothing, then you're off the hook, and we'll move on to nine point two, Community Development Committee. Counselor Crokin?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held February nineteenth, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Did everyone have a chance to read over the minutes? Any areas or missions that you were able to spot? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote.
We never make any mistakes here.
Well, there are only two of you there.
Not in our minutes, anyways.
Yeah.
That motion carries. Counselor Crokin?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. I also move council direct administration to have a structural review of the original Pace Building done before proceeding with the installation of an elevator. Just to speak to that briefly, Mr. Mayor, the, we've owned that building for, in the area of forty years old, and we're going to be spending on that elevator that we have promised them for the last two years, in the area of five hundred thousand dollars. So we, we felt that it would be appropriate if we'd have administration look at the structural integrity of the building before spending that amount of money, but, so if there's any other questions on that, our community living Gary might be able to give us a few more details.
Okay, thanks very much. I do see one person in the queue, Counselor Rice.
No, not on that topic, on something else. If somebody else has any questions on that topic.
Okay, Counselor Wong?
Yes, Mayor Given. I was wondering if the structural review had a budget implication at all?
Sure. So for the director of community living, Mr. Roth?
The budget currently does not have provisions for the structural review. We'd have to find a funding source for that.
Okay.
So we're not identifying the, well, I guess we don't have to right now. Or do we? Mr. Roth?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly if council directs us to carry out this structural review, we'll do that and find the funding source to cover the amount.
Okay.
Satisfied, I guess.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Roth, I wonder then, could you speak to what administration estimates a potential cost for something like this would be?
Of course, until we go to, through the RFPR tender process, we don't know the exact cost. Estimation would be in around the eight to ten thousand dollar range, depending on the cost. That's all we've seen on, in other buildings of similar size.
Further discussion or debate? Counselor Rice?
The, the report that will be coming to a future community living committee regarding the track and field component.
Sorry, sorry, Counselor Rice, we're still on the Pace, the Pace Bill.
Are you still on that? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done that.
Yeah. Nope, we staffed a vote first before we're, before we're done that one. Any further discussion or debate? I will be voting against this motion because it doesn't identify a cost or a potential funding source. I believe before council directs administration to do some work, that we have to have some idea of how we're going to pay for it. And so at the committee level, obviously, that discussion didn't happen, so I can't support this motion. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Rice?
Okay, at the committee, they suggested that Pace has applied for a grant, and the city has applied for a grant. So would it make sense to table this till we hear or make the motion conditional upon those grants being realized or something? I guess I would move an amendment to the motion.
Okay, if you'd like to propose amendment, certainly you're...
Oh, thank you. I, I move the motion be amended by adding...
Counselor Rice, maybe potentially before you go to the trouble of wording a motion, or maybe to give you a little bit of time to think about how you would word that, I would have a question for administration. I was unfortunately at another meeting, I wasn't able to be at the committee meeting. So can administration speak to the need? Was this a recommendation from administration to do this? Has our facilities department had a look at the building, and was this their recommendation that we needed undertake this work? Mr. Roth?
Your worship, Counselor McLean actually had raised the, had requested this to be done. Facilities has been working with this building for about forty years. Facilities has been working with this building for about 40 years, the entire time we've owned the building. It was designed as an RCMP building made of concrete construction, and there's no indication of structural issues, but at the same time with investing the value of the new elevator construction, there was some belief that this would be, certainly be useful in ensuring that the new construction is compatible with development. But like I said, it was raised actually by Counselor McLean.
Okay. Okay. Further discussion or debate? I do see Counselor McLean in the queue, so Counselor Rice, I think as we're sort of discussing if he still see need. Counselor McLean? Let me get to you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd probably direct it to Gary Roth. Question of, I think the previous council went into a contract with Pace to have this elevator built within a timeframe, and I think we're past the timeframe now. So, I don't know about waiting for grants or whatever. I think we're obligated by the contract. Could you respond to that, Gary?
Your worship, as part of the lease arrangement with Pace Building, with Pace was to, for the city to provide an elevator to the building. That was done at the time when the building was leased to Pace. That was supposed to have been completed a while ago, so we have, trying to keep our costs as minimal as possible, and it's led to a redesign of the project of the elevator to help reduce costs and to also meet Pace's requirements. So, that's been done, and we're just in the process of trying to finalize it to carry forward.
Okay. Thanks very much. Counsel... Sorry, Mr. City Manager, you have some additional information?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Given. The construction project manager indicated in his report that the price for a structural review would be $15,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sherbeck. I do have a few people in the queue have Counselor Monroe, Tool, Wong, and then Rice. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Sorry, just going back to the actual cost of the elevator, is that right, $500,000 for the cost of the elevator?
Mr. Roth?
Approximately. Your worship, I can get to the exact amount here in a moment, but it's approximately that amount.
Okay. Just follow up. To me, that seems quite high for an elevator. I mean, I don't know very much about elevators, but is that typical of what our buildings are, or is there something special about this elevator?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, that particular one involves some, a small addition on the outside of the building. The elevator would actually be on the outside of the building. We actually redesigned the building to bring the cost down from our previous design and previous estimate, so it has been ready redesigned, bring the cost down to change, to change it up a bit, to reduce costs and still meet Pace's requirements.
If I remember correctly from the Karen on the Boulevard presentation one time, I think that developer said it was about $250,000 for an elevator and brand-new construction where there was a tunnel physically built for it. So, the addition of the mechanism inside of the tunnel was 250, so that's the only context that I have.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Do you want to turn your mic? Oh. Counselor Wong?
I'll do that manually. I agree with Mayor Given here that we really do need to identify a funding source before we go ahead and make these kind of decisions, so I don't mean to belabor this issue, but I guess, worst case is it takes a couple of weeks before it comes back to council. It's been two years. Another couple of weeks probably isn't going to affect things too much. It is important that we know where we're getting the money before we go ahead and spend it.
Okay. Counselor Wong, I see Counselor Tool?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just wanted to clarify that when Gary Roth has basically specified that the elevator will be on the outside of the building and the use of the building will be completely unharmed by any construction during that process. I'm also a little shocked at the value of the estimate, and without any funding, I'm still not sure if I would vote in favor of going ahead or not. And I would have a tendency to definitely find out where we're going to get the money first before I was given a positive vote. So, my two cents.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Tool. Counselor Rice, we're back around to you.
A couple of questions. First of all, does the lease, I can't believe we would enter into a lease that kind of had this kind of a pricey price tag, particularly what we charge them for the building. Did we specify what kind of an elevator? I, you know, right away, three come immediately to my mind. There's the kind that, that they had over at the art gallery where you sit in a chair and it goes up the stairs at just a, like a chair lift. There's the kind where you get in, it's big enough for one person, you have to keep your finger on the button while it goes from floor one up, and it's about the size of an average coat closet. That's all the space it takes up. And then there is an elevator like the one we have here where several people can get in and you can go up several floors and down and up and do all manner of wonderful things. So, does our lease suggest that we should give them an elevator, or does it say, "We will give you a wonderful elevator"?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, certainly the lease says we will provide an elevator. The elevator that was designed and spec'd out by our facilities staff was not a large, eloquent elevator. It was one that meets building code requirements, and one of the challenges is also is meeting to the multiple levels that's in place in the Pace building. It's not an excessive elevator, it's just the, beats the, meets the bare standards.
I just, I'm still having trouble accepting that it has to go on the outside of the building. You know, I go to meetings every month at the Federated Gas Co-op building, and that's all they got is one of those little coat closet ones. So, secondly, it says here that if one or both of the grants are not realized, the city has a backup plan. So, I wonder, I guess, if I were to make an amendment asking for a funding plan, you would outline that backup plan in that report. Is that correct?
Mr. Roth?
Your worship, yes, that's certainly, certainly the case.
Okay. If there's no more questions, I'll...
I see one last person in queue, so Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I do concede a bit, I just wanted to bring it to the open of a $500,000 elevator. Agreement's already been done, like I said previously. Just because it's not part of the building, you go in the basement, you will be still attaching pilings and going inward, making openings on the first floor and the second floor. And on a building that's worth, I don't know the price, and you're putting $500,000, it's a very good idea to have a structural review on it, on the building itself. And as funding, I think there's a reserve, I don't know how many funding, 2% for buildings, where, terror, what we're going to do, but hopefully administration figured it out. So, I'll vote against it for as well, even though I brought it forward, I just wanted some heated discussion on it.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Any amendments?
Yes, now do I make mine? Okay, I move that the, this issue be sent back to administration to come forward with a report on sources of funding. And that's all we need, I guess, is sources of funding.
Sure. So, Counselor Rice, is your motion specific to the structural review, or is it the, the construction project? Because if it's, if we're limiting your, if you're amending, then we're talking just about the structural review. If you're talking about the whole project...
I'm talking about the whole project.
Then I think potentially, I think that's a little bit more of an amendment, more than amendment, so I would, I'm not going to accept that one. I think we would need to make an additional amendment. This, the motion speaks to...
Okay, I would move that the structural review of the original Pace building be referred back to administration.
Gary?
Well, you've got to give a reason why, before it comes back.
Or what you're asking them to do. I mean, ultimately, the question is, does council want to direct administration to do a structural review or these other, this look? And are there any sort of tweaks to that? Or do we...
Okay, so if we were to defeat this motion, then we could make a motion to relook at the whole project and identify funding. Okay, I'll withdraw my amendment to that motion then.
Okay. Yes, because ultimately, I guess, I suppose if this motion is defeated, there's going to be, need to be some action on the project itself.
Yeah. Okay.
Counselor Gustafson?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just curious to know what the facilities master plan states for the future of this building? If anybody knows that off.
Well, I can speak to the building a little bit. Pace came in possession of the building as part of a trade. The city of Grand Prairie facilitated the development of Safety City by basically buying the building which Safety City is in now, or sorry, Pace had bought the building that Safety City occupies now. The city of Grand Prairie identified that it may work well for that Safety City concept because of the land that was available near it, and so the city traded the former RCMP building with Pace. So, they are, I believe, the actual owners of the building, so it shouldn't show up in our facilities master plan. Oh, Mr. Sherbeck? Not that it's complex or anything?
No, it's not. You were actually going on the right way, Mayor Given. It started out that way, and it probably wasn't part of the facilities master, because we had thought that they would take ownership of the building. But in the last minute, they decided they just wanted to lease it from us, so the swap still happened, but on a lease arrangement as opposed to, instead of them owning it.
Okay. Sure. So, the question from Counselor Gustafson was, how long was the lease? And I'm not sure if we have that information at hand now. Mr. Roth?
I don't have that information really in front of me, but it is a long-term lease.
Yes. Hearing potentially 20 years or more. Okay. Okay. So, any further discussion or debate on the motion that was a direction to administration to do a structural review of the original Pace building? Any further discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. And so, is there any... Counselor Rice, I see you...
I move that the issue of the Pace elevator be, or administration be requested to provide a report on the sources of funding and options for the Pace elevator.
To the appropriate standing committee.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Basically, a motion of referral of the project back to committee for a report on the funding proposal. Okay. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. I think that handles everything from Community Development Committee meeting. Counselor Crokin, did you have anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yeah, the last item was pretty well up and down, but Kaylee actually had a, brought a report to us about the track and field, and Mr. Cabo, Cabo? Said that for us, for hosting track and field events, we have to get the, that legion track up to a spec where we can hold citywide tournaments that will attract people from across the province. So, we, the bids came in significantly higher than the $65,000 we have, in more than the $400,000 range, so we will have to, we're going to have to look for additional funds on that. So, it's, it's something that we want to have done, but funds aren't there, so that was, that was about it, Mayor Given.
If that was everything, then I would move...
Thank you.
Counselor Rice, did you have a question?
I did. I, I don't know how we would be that far off. Did we underestimate what was needed for track and field, or like, were we living in dreamland, or like, the difference between 65 grand and 400 is like, yeah, right.
Mr. Roth, can you speak to, speak to the difference in budget and...
Certainly, administration has been, we're in discussions with the bidder that bid the large amount, and there certainly was indication that timing and the time of the year was a large significant factor into the additional costs. There will actually be a report as part of tomorrow's community living committee to look at the options and the funding sources for this particular project.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Roth. So, that would complete everything from that Community Development Committee meeting, and I believe that would take us to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor. I move council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held February 26, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note anything out of place in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thank you, Mayor Given. I just want to speak a little bit to the meeting. There's some funding that was given out.
There was one motion coming...
Oh, you want to do the, oh, yeah, the other motion, sorry. I skipped right, can I, I have to go right down to 9.3.1 again?
Yeah.
Okay, I move council approve the amendments to the travel funding section of the Pursuit of Excellence guidelines as follows. Over 350 kilometers would be $200, over 750 kilometers would be $250, over 1,200 kilometers would be $400, and over 1,600 kilometers would be $500, and I'll go from there.
Okay. And do you want to speak to the motion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Given. I think it was sort of outdated as the committee was talking about, there was an area of like Western Canada, Alberta, it was $200, and the rest of Canada was $250 for travel, and we felt that it was possibly quite on the lower side, so it was, look at the guidelines and see if we could change them.
Okay. And Counselor McLean, I don't believe this changes the amount of money that's available through the program, is that correct?
No, it's still the same, and, but it just changes the distance of travel, like on an athlete will go. It reflects it better.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
What about, I have two questions. What about up to, up to 350?
Well, that'd be considered local. So, no.
So, Counselor Rice, your question is, what if somebody doesn't travel over 350 kilometers?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, there's, the funding's not there, it's over 350. So, it's like if you were going to go to Dawson or, so basically if you're going to Jasper, it's included, Jasper's over 350, so you're going outside the boundary. So, it's just having a boundary around the city.
And it's a flat rate, it's not based on kilometers.
Well, that's, it's, 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 under 350, it's kilometers. So, if you're over 350, you'll get the base rate of $200. Inside that diameter, no.
It's a, yeah, I think Counselor Rice, it's a flat rate, and the intent is to aid athletes that are traveling outside of our region, so sort of offset the cost of living in the north, I think is the intent.
Hey, thank you.
I don't like flat. Stop with that.
Well, it is, oh, flat.
This one, man.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wasn't clear on whether or not this was round-trip travel or whether this was radius from the city.
No, I believe it's direction. Like, as soon as you hit 350 driving Edmonton, you get your $200, so it's not around.
Distance away from the city.
Not round trip, distance away, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I try to come home?
No.
No.
Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor McLean, you wanted to highlight a few items from that agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple, couple items. We had some coach development funding for volleyball for Nicole Martins of $1,000. There was three athlete travel funding amounts for $200 each, and a coach traveling fund for 200. But there's one I want to speak of is on adapted physical activity, fitness and sports symposium funding. And I just want to speak to this quickly. There, basically, the APA Symposium is aimed at increasing community readiness for the inclusion of people of all abilities within the physical activity settings through the training of practitioners, fitness professionals, administrators, and students. The three-day adapted physical activity, sport, and fitness symposium will deliver practical sessions and seminars to enhance the opportunity for individuals experienced disability within the Grand Prairie region. And I just want to say one quick note on this, I think this is marvelous for the city of Grand Prairie. Keynote speaker would be Ross Norton. Ross was a member of the men's Canadian national team in sport of wheelchair basketball, returned home with a silver medal from 2008 Summer Paralympic Games in Beijing. Ross was also in the team...
Ross was also on the team when it won its first gold medal in the sport at the 2000 Summer Games in Sydney, Australia, and then went on to repeat its gold medal performance at the 2004 Summer Parapole Games in Athens, Greece. So this is pretty, gonna be an amazing event in the city. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean, I believe that handles all of the items of business from that Pursuit of Excellence Committee, and we go to item 9.4, General Government Services. And Councillor Augustus, and I believe you're the acting chairman for that committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the Counsel receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held February 26, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Augustus. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Augustus?
I'll move the Counsel adopt the industrial attraction strategy as presented. Mayor Given, the industrial attraction strategy was, is essentially addressing the fiscal sustainability portion of Council's strategic plan. The industrial attraction strategy was created to encourage industrial and commercial land development. The strategy was created through consultation with community stakeholders, including commercial and industrial developers, business owners, utility companies, and the city's development services departments. The plan was drafted by the Economic Development Advisory Committee. This is one step towards the city's financial sustainability, encouraging development, making industrial land competitively available.
Thanks very much, Councillor Augustus. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Augustus?
Thank you. I will move the Counsel approve the request from the Town of Swan Hills for the provision of emergency call answer and fire dispatch services by the Northwest Regional Communication Center, operated by the Grand Prairie Fire Department. Mayor Given, this is, this fills in basically our superb dispatch services here in the northern quadrant, northwestern quadrant region of Alberta. Swan Hills has about 50 calls, and it's a $6,000 a year contract to provide that service for them.
Thanks very much, Councillor Augustus. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Augustus, anything else you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, Mayor Given, besides being the last General Government Services meeting in the history of Grand Prairie.
For now.
For now. David Allinger presented the 2011 Citizen Satisfaction Survey. The survey, survey states that citizens wanted more info, information, so Mr. Allinger and his department have created a very well-enhanced communication plan, the online newsletter, the Community Connections is another great feature we have here, the Land Use and Planning Newsletter. And of course, the See, Click, Fix on our website has about 600 issues reported. The exceptional service program is underway, and improving internal and external services. And this, the new survey will, the 2012 survey will be going out in April. And that was, that was all for General Government Services.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Augustus. So we, we hadn't, that finishes all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence tonight, and I believe our delegation business was all addressed with items that were on the agenda. We had no notices of motion tonight, and that would take us to council member reports. There were two council members that had reports from agencies, boards, and commissions that they represent on behalf of the city. Councillor Augustus, you had Downtown Association.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Last week, we had the AGM Downtown, Downtown General Meeting for the Downtown Association. There was approximately 35, 35 people there. Pierre Holm, they were, they received the Art Olet Award, and Theresa Senkel, wife of Dr. Senkel, the new eye doctor here in Grand Prairie, received the Downtowner of the Year Award. That is in the, people may know it as the old Alberta Liquor Store Building is what I was first introduced to it as many years ago, and now it has been transformed into a beautiful, beautiful eye, eye doctor center. Some of the marketing objectives for the Downtown Association this year will be to increase sales and revenue for the downtown business, develop and enhance special events and cross-promote promotions to expand the downtown customer base and to make downtown interactive and entertaining, increase exposure in the primary, secondary, and territory, territory market area, maintain an aggressive and distinctive public and community relations program designed to gain positive local exposure for our downtown, maintain good member relations and communications, explore partnership opportunities to enhance promotional dollars. Some of the things that are going on downtown this summer, this year, April 24 is the Thank You Luncheon for the Administrative Professionals Day, May 16, the Shop Crawl Extended Hours Downtown, and the party, apparently. May 21 is the Stomp E Dress Western. June, beginning of June, we'll be hanging the new flower baskets, planters, and banners downtown to beautify our downtown. June 15 is a Sizzling Summer Sidewalk Sale. June 15, mark your calendar, somebody, two bodies are going to be married downtown. Lucky, lucky couples, say their vows downtown. Canada Day Parade, July 1, July 19 to 21, the Street Performers Festival. October 26 is the Little Monsters Downtown Foot Parade. Great success last year, it was overwhelming for, for some of the downtown businesses, we had such a great turnout. Vegas Night, another great promotion for downtown. Black Friday, November, the Farmer's Market Craft Sale, and the Santa Claus Parade are some of the things that go on downtown when, when we're not looking. Something else, there's been a lot of lately, and I'd like to make a referral to the appropriate Community Living Growth Committee, is lots of talk about graffiti lately, so I'd like to know where, where our, our group is on that lately, and an update on, on how we can reduce the amount of graffiti here in Grand Prairie. And that's where the Downtown Association is today.
Okay, so referral to probably community safety around graffiti, and so reported a future meeting. Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Augustus. And Councillor Monroe, you had Nighthawk Area Recreation Board. Would you like to give us a little bit of an update? Sorry, Councillor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yes, we did have a Nighthawk Board meeting. We talked about, I guess, the, how the hill's doing, and it seems to be on track. We've had some fairly successful skiing days out there, and it looks like everything's going well. We're in possession now of a new Snowcat, which is basically the groomer that takes care of the hill, and it's been performing excellent out there, and I guess the, the difference in the snowmaking is quite amazing when you have this piece of equipment. Some upcoming events here, we've got a casino coming up, fundraiser for the Nighthawk Area, which should help out significantly in the financial situation, as well as this last weekend, we hosted the sponsorship appreciation evening, which was quite successful, and I'll talk a little bit more about that during our roundtable.
Okay, well, speaking of roundtable, Councillor Monroe, would you like to start off roundtable for us?
Okay.
We'll go around to Councillor.
Thanks. So on February 19, I attended the mediation meetings in regards to city-county annexation. As already mentioned, I was at the Nighthawk Board Meeting on the 26th. On the 20th of February, I had an opportunity to meet with fellow councillors of Grand Cache, and it was quite nice to talk to them and hear what issues are they're having, and, and how they're somewhat similar to ours. Later that evening, I attended the Premier's Dinner. It was a packed, packed place at the New Padolin Hotel, and it was a really great event. On the 21st, I attended the United Way wrap-up party, and I'm proud to say that the City of Grand Prairie got the outstanding campaign team, so hats off to all the City of Grand Prairie employees for that big achievement. Also like to recognize Costco, who's always been a big supporter of the United Way, they managed to pull in over $100,000 and obtained the Chairman's Award, so that's, that's great news from them. And of course, the United Way themselves, which broke the $1 million mark this year, so it's the highest amount they've ever raised. 22nd, attended the more annexation mediation meetings. On the 23rd, had a visit with Brian Mason and a few of the other NDP caucus members here at City Hall. Nice to have a little meeting with them. Attended the Downtown Association AGM on the 27th. On the 28th, attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer over at the Great Northern Casino, absolutely packed in there, but great events. Their chef over there, Brent Moon, I believe it is, created some, some wonderful snacks for everyone, and it was, it was a good time over there. On the 20, also on the 28th, I guess I was in some meetings in regards to our pavement management. And then on the 2nd, just this last weekend, the Nighthawk Sponsorship Appreciation Evening, as all of you recall, the city is now a big sponsor of Nighthawk. It was, it was a great event, we had about 80 of the corporate sponsors and municipal sponsors out there. We also had Wayne Drysdale, Reeve Leanne Boprey, councillors from the MDF Greenview, Ed Toffelson and Bill Harder, all came out for this event, and Councillor O'Toole, who actually rode a tube down the hill, and I'm sure he'll tell you about that in a bit. And, and of course, they were giving out rides in the demonstration rides on the new Snowcat, and how this thing can basically climb vertical walls, so it was, it was a good event. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks very much, Councillor Monroe. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the 22nd, I chaired the Joint Grand Cache Council with Grand Prairie, and like Councillor Monroe had suggested, it was a good discussion, we, we talked a number of things that are going on in the Grand Cache area, and there's a commitment on our part to maybe go down and visit them sometime in the near future. I also attended the Growing the North Conference, and later that night, I attended the dinner with the Premier. On the 21st, I also attended the Growing the North Conference. Later that night, I attended the United Way Spirit Awards, and once again, I want to put a big hand out to Bernie Benson and Michelle Gartner for doing an outstanding job for the City of Grand Prairie and winning the Outstanding Campaign Team Award. I did a little role on, as Deputy Mayor, and presented the first-time campaign, and the winners of that were the Rainbow Turcon Corporation or Company in Grand Prairie, and it was a great, great event, and very heartwarming to be able to present to a long-established company in Grand Prairie. And just prior to that, we had a competitive sport weigh-in, and so I was just a little tiny bit late making the, the United Way, and Bernie Benson was not very happy with me, but I showed up in time, so that was good. On the 22nd, there was the MMA event, which was, promoter was Five Star Fight Club, and it was held at the Jackpot Bar and Grill, and I can tell you that it was a success. Was a very well-organized group of people that were the promoters, and very easy to work with, and they're looking, coming back again at least one more time this year. I also attended a tender opening that day. On the 23rd, I attended Big Hearts for Big Kids fundraiser at the Tech Center, and congratulations to Tanil for raising over $160,000 that event, and that'll be going to Sunrise House, so good for her. On the 25th, I attended a Chair Leaders organizational meeting for this, later this summer, and basically Chair Leaders is individuals that are not normally in wheelchairs, that maybe have a unique role in the city and surrounding area, to take the, the role of being in a chair to understand some of the difficulties and challenges in a normal day, and we're organizing that for later this year. I attended the Downtown Association AGM on the 27th, and congratulations once again to all the award winners, and, and thanks to Mingles on Main for supplying an excellent breakfast that day. On the 28th, I went to the Philip J. Curry Museum Building Committee, and we were there for quite a while, kind of figuring out what was gonna be done and how it was gonna be done. Later that day, I attended the Pavement Policy Management that the city is looking at and into, and we'll see where we go with that, and once again, I attended the Chamber Mixer at the casino. On the 1st of March, I attended the, the inaugural flight into Grand Prairie and the inaugural flight out of Grand Prairie with the new Air Canada Q400, and it was attended by a number of people. Just to give you a little heads up on the aircraft, it is a little faster than the Dash Eight, it's a little longer than the Dash Eight, and it's a little wider in the Dash Eight, and if you're about six feet tall, you can stand upright and not bang your head. And there's, it'd be a little bit more comfortable to ride in, and then that flight goes from Grand Prairie to Calgary and back. That's with Air Canada. I attended the flag raising here at City Hall with Franco Alberta, a bunch of French-speaking children from the different schools in Grand Prairie, and I'm very proud of our mayor who gave his speech in French. Last year, he, he didn't say too many words in French, and he was challenged this year, and I happened to be speaking to some French-speaking people, and they said he did an excellent job, so hats off to you learning a fairly lengthy speech in French. And shortly after that, I attended a tender opening, and the topic of my house this last couple days is the Nighthawk Open House. I went down the sled tube run, and if anybody has not done that, I, I feel that that's something that you should take in. It's about 400 meters long, and you're riding on a tube, and your life comes before your eyes many times, and your heart is right here, you have a shortness of breath for just a few seconds, but it's definitely worthwhile. And I want to thank Nighthawk for hosting such a great event. We walked down and seen some of the slalom skiers go down through a race, and some of the older athletes as well, and we did go for a ride in that Snowcat, and once again, they should be paying admission for that thing, too. I didn't think a machine could climb that steep, but that was my report, sir.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On February 19, I went to Taste of the North, and right after council, met up with Councillor Crokin there as well. Tasted what was still available, there was a lot of boots that were set up and going before the time was done, but it was very good to check it out, and bought some honey, wild berry honey, and it's actually really, really good. February 20, 21, I attended the Growing North Conference. As well, on the 20th, I met the Council GC, Grand Cache, and I also went to the Premier's Dinner, where she eloquently said about wage freezes, hold the line and cuts very eloquently. February 21, I, I took my children to the Frost Moon the first evening, and I had my Kendra and Cara there, and I thought, am I missing something? And yes, I was, it was United Way, so I decided I couldn't bring my children there, so we went in and read a couple books in the library, so. As well, on February, so the Frost Moon, I would say, right on to Mayor Given stuff, like bringing children together and families is important, and maybe different events that weekend, because it'd get postponed because of weather, maybe, you know, was hard, but to see stuff made out of ice there, and the idea was great, and how it comes next year, and Arctic Winter Games actually helped fund that a bit, $5,500. February 23, I also met with NDP Caucus. February 23 as well, I ended up bumping into Councillor Crokin again, well, at the Annual Maple Sugar Festival, and I attended with my wife Tina, my kids Kendra and Cara, and I have to say, out of the ones I attended there at Mississippi Park, this was one of the biggest, and it was awesome, they had a little campfire going, lots of maple sugar happening, and horse riding, it was really, really nice. So that's the 23rd. February 26, 27, 28, and the 1st, I went to Alberta Recycling Spring Seminar in Drumheller. Spring Seminar in Drumheller. I just want to speak to a couple of things on this. So it is roundtable, so. Basically, there's different presentations brought about. A couple that got my eye was Clean the World from hotels about, they use about ten thousand bars a day they recycle. And they put them through a steamer and send them across to the world. And they say, you know, hygiene, cleaning your hands could help save a lot of lives. So I took that with a really good idea that they're doing hotels in North America. As well, at this event, which I was glad to see Jeff Johnson there, where he's working back with Octairi Utilities, speaking of a new bioreactor to energy. Yeah, he's a really bonus for that company. Also Steve Madden for the county GP was there on landfill setbacks. That wasn't, but anyways, it was nice to hear that. And there's a couple of things I just want to speak to quick was, on presentations was solar streetlights. And I'm going to hit this a little bit. I can remember getting on council and asking questions about expense about two years ago and I was told twenty, thirty thousand dollars. But there was an individual that was the CEO of Camrose County, which I gave information to Gary Roth and hopefully the city manager will get this and Community Growth, Jeanette. They put one in over two years ago for six thousand dollars. So I, I just find those numbers different. So I actually went on my own little chase to go check this out. And I talked to a lady from the, just in the county that had it because there were a couple of buildings separate from lights. That's why they needed it for safety and be able to walk into the hamlet, round hills or something like that. Her name was Isabella Chase. She said in two and a half years, the light, it's been great in the winter. It's been well-lit. They had one problem with the wiring, little loose. And the bulb LED was sixteen hundred dollars. But your benefits on this, we're, we're at parity now with solar. We got a new trail system going in. I think this is the future. And I believe residents could be the future for solar power, I believe, within less than ten years. New subdivision can be all solar if we hit this route. So anyways, I found that very gratifying to hear this and that's why I went away to check it out. And that's why these different things mean an awful lot. One other thing I want to say, there was a fellow there as well did a presentation on Edson Go Solar, but this individual's about solar, Gordon Howe. And I think if we are going to go down a route and if council could go that way, it'd be good to have him up here to talk to our different community groups. How solar has improved its cost of, when he did his first house, he was first in twelve and ninety-five was forty thousand, ten thousand now. And his house is pretty well uses hardly any power. He's mostly putting on the grid. He's based out of Edmonton. And I'd be loved to see him have come in here and be with city staff and then have an open house at Centre Two Thousand. So I think within less than ten years, we could have subdivisions, all solar power in them. And so that's everything. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Councillor Wong.
Yes, thank you Mayor Given. Before I start my roundtable, I was wondering if councillor McLean wanted to refer the matter of solar streetlights to the Community Growth Committee. It's probably worthwhile to investigate.
I'm, I actually gave some paperwork to Gary Roth, so I do want this referred. I think this is, we got a new trail system happening, Centre Two Thousand, going underneath on that area. And some of this is when you talk about running wires, Camrose County as well had a transfer station where it would have cost them forty-eight thousand dollars just to run the wiring to the lights. And they're putting in two solar power lights for twelve thousand dollars. So we're past parity. We're there now. This can happen. So I want it referred to a community group, to community living and growth.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well.
Councillor Wong.
Thank you Mayor Given. I just wanted to start off by saying that this has got to be the last, or the last two weeks have got to be the two busiest weeks I've ever spent on council, especially since one of those days was supposed to be a holiday day. So kudos to everyone on council for putting in all the extra time. And especially, I know Mayor Given has been so busy with all of the, the representation that he's had to put forth and councillor O'Toole as deputy mayor. I've seen him at everything that I've been to. I've been to a lot of things. I put in fifty hours myself this week, or these last two weeks. And he's been to at least a half a dozen events that I hadn't even considered because I have a life outside of council, unlike councillor O'Toole over there. That's my backhanded compliment to you. I'll go really quickly through mine. February twentieth, Growing the North Conference, as well as the Grand Cash Council and the Premier Redford's Dinner. February twenty-first, United Way Community Spirits Awards. February nineteenth and twenty-first, I attended the annexation mediation meetings with the city and the county. Here's one that's different. February twenty-second, my wife and I went to the GP Live Theaters production of the musical Cats at the Douglas J. Cardinal Theatre. I just wanted to send out congratulations to all of the, the cast, the volunteers, the staff and the live theater itself for putting on an amazing performance. They, they set the bar really, really high for community theater in the city and they did just such a wonderful job. I know that they did record numbers as well. So for those of you who didn't make it out there, you really missed out big time. February twenty-third, council members met with the Alberta NDP Caucus, including party leader Brian Mason. February twenty-fifth, I attended the Canadian Paraplegic Association's Chair Leaders Committee Meeting. Councillor O'Toole and I are both sitting on the planning committee this year. February twenty-eighth, council had an information session on our pavement quality program. I thought that was really interesting. It basically, it's a piece of software that helps us determine, or helps city staff determine what the priorities are for roads in the city. And we can basically configure it a number of different ways, but the, it, it really helps to optimize the dollars that we put into repairing the roads. I know there's some people around the city that think that there is some political influence on which roads get fixed first. That's simply not the case. We really rely on evaluations from experts and whether they be software or, or internal or external experts to the city. February twenty-eighth, I attended the Chamber Commerce Mixer at the Great Northern Casino. Most people don't know that you can go there for a night of entertainment and some really good food. They have great selection of wine and spirits there that you wouldn't normally expect to see that caliber of, of stuff at a casino. So I really highly recommend people pay them a visit, especially since they bring in a lot of free entertainment, too. March first, I was at the Franco Albertan Flag Raising Ceremony and the proclamation by the mayor. And that's everything.
Thanks very much councillor Wong. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you Mayor Given. I attended the Growing the North Conference, way out in the Tech Center. It was very interesting, listened to Bob Paulson, the commissioner of the, of the RCMP here in Canada. They have thirty thousand staff and nineteen thousand police officers is, is what it takes to look after a big country like this. One thing I noticed, that he noticed, is that we are the hub of the area. And he noticed the security social integration that we, we have involving our communities all around the region. Something else he mentioned, that Alberta is low with police officers, yet our crime rate is, is a little higher than that. So hoping our, our police people are, are really putting in the numbers to get us more police officers here in Grand Prairie. Honorable Rona Ambrose was very interesting to, to listen to. She really quoted our, and liked our resourceful spirit, growing opportunity logo that and branding that we carry here in Grand Prairie. Dinner with premier Alison Redford and her speech that evening. Went to the Frost Moon Festival, skated around with my kids. Went to the Tenille Concert, Big Hearts for Big Kids fundraiser for, for Sunrise House. Congratulations to, to her and her family for, for doing that with our community. Downtown Association Annual General Meeting. Pavement Management, yes, as Dan said, it was very interesting, optimizing pavement condition, preventive maintenance that we can do. Here in Grand Prairie, I was, I was impressed to learn that we have seven hundred and thirty-three lane kilometers of road in Grand Prairie with an estimated value of approximately one point three billion dollars. It's a lot of pavement. One thing they mentioned was roads fail due to misleading traffic counts, improper design and illegal, illegal truckloads, most of the time with lost truckers, I, I do believe. So I think this is a good time to refer something else to Dan's, Dan's, community, community Dan's community security. About our dangerous goods routes. I'd like to know where our dangerous goods routes are and where they're going with the, in and around town. If we could have somebody report to the, to the rate committee on, on where we're going with that. And that's about all, sir.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Councillor Rice.
I attended the meeting with the NDP Caucus. I attended the tour and presentation at Onside Restoration. It was certainly a fascinating process of what they go through to clean people's belongings after a flood or a fire. Really a fascinating facility they have there. I attended the airport, the unveiling, if you will, of the new aircraft. That's quite exciting that it'll be increasing the capacity from here. Anybody who has flown in or out of here in the last few months knows that the planes are always full. So certainly bringing a bigger plane with a bigger capacity is a welcome addition. Attended the Franco Canadian Flag Raising. Again, I too congratulate the mayor on his, his speech. Was very good. And it's always, that event every year when they have the flag raising, it's always such a pleasure to hear those schoolchildren singing Oh Canada in French. It's, it's just a really, I think, really special little part of the day. I attended the Pavement Management presentation. And I attended the Chamber of Commerce Mixer at the casino. I also attended the Brownlee LLP Emerging Trends Workshop, a very fascinating workshop. One of the best sessions was from Planning and Development Enforcement. It was called Show Me the Money. The one I think I enjoyed the most had to deal with the court-ordered compliance on safely properties and injunctive release, relief. So, sorry, it's on, it was on derelict properties. I've asked that this issue be placed on the committee meeting on March twelfth, whatever we're calling it this week, is to discuss what our process is vis-à-vis some of the new precedents that, that were discussed at that. So it was well worth attending. That's all.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Councillor Crokin.
Thank you Mayor Given. I also have to agree with Dan Wong. I didn't keep track of the hours, but I'm sure they're, they're right along there with you. On February the nineteenth, after council, I did attend the Taste the North and Growing, at the Growing the North Conference. And like Kevin McLean, I did buy a few things there and tasted quite a bit of the, there was even Rabbit there, which was rather good. It's getting close to Easter. And again, on the twentieth, in the morning, I attended Growing the North. They had a nice breakfast speaker. And also in the afternoon, we met with Grand Cash Council. And a little later that evening, we met, we had dinner with the premier. Again, on the twenty-first, attended the Growing the North, the breakfast and the breakfast speaker. But unfortunately, there was a number of people that had to leave because of being out of town or whatever. The, it's not often I really get taken over by a speaker. And our closing speaker was a lady by the name of Barb Stegman. And she has, if you watch Dragon's Den, she was on the Dragon's Den and three of them jumped on and bought seventy-five thousand, they bought fifteen percent of her company. And her, her perfume is Make Perfume Not War in Afghanistan. She pays them eight thousand dollars a liter for oil from orange blossoms rather than from opium. And her and Bill Clinton were heading to Haiti and she just has a, a new fragrance coming from Haiti. Very inspirational. She's part Jewish and part Catholic. She's quite a nice lady. Later that night, again, I attended the United Way Champions of Change Dinner and congratulations to all the winners, too many to mention. Then on Saturday, the twenty-third, I also met with Brian Mason and the NDP Caucus. They were doing a whirlwind seven city stop. And again, on the twenty-third, I attended the ACFA, the seventh, fifteenth Annual Maple Sugar Festival. The taffy was, in the snow, was exceptionally good. I could only get two or three of them away from some of those other fellows. Then that night, I attended the Big Hearts for Big Kids Sunrise House. My goodness gracious, that little bowl of dynamite Tenille, she, she says something else, I don't know where she gets her energy, but a hundred and sixty-five thousand, that was really good. On the twenty-seventh, I attended Downtown Association Annual General Meeting at Mingles on Main and the breakfast was really good. And I think I'll thank Helen because she brought mine out and gave me coffee most of the morning. So that was very good. Thank you again Helen. Twenty-eighth, I also attended the Onside Restoration brand-new facility. They have forty-two employees there. It's amazing the, the things they can do. Congratulations to Lance, their new general manager. I also attended the, later that day, the information session on road maintenance. And it goes to show what you, what happens to your roads if you don't do anything. And it really does deteriorate and in a very short time, like over three, four, five years. So we have to make sure we keep our eye on that. March first, the, again, the Franco Albertan Flag Raising and proclamation by our mayor in, in French at City Hall. There were three to four hundred kids here. It was amazing to see those kids all singing. And I sang French right along with them. It was very, very good. And Gene Shang Young, he sang, he's been doing it for six years. So God bless Gene, he's a good singer. And on the second, I attended at eight PM at night, the greatest, one of the biggest fundraisers, they've had the cancer fundraising at the Curling Rink, where we saw our fire chief Dan Lemieux lose his pink locks. And it was attended, it was a packed house upstairs at the Curling Rink. And then of course, they were all hollering for mine. I said, mine's half gone, so it wouldn't be a very good deal. So that was everything, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. So I also attended the Growing North, Growing the North Conference. It was my pleasure to bring greetings on behalf of council to one of the opening sessions and also my pleasure to introduce the RCMP Commissioner, Robert Paulson. Fantastic to see him here in Grand Prairie. I understand he also had an opportunity to visit our local detachment and speak with members there. Certainly appreciate him doing that. Later that day, I attended the annexation mediation meetings and a minis, a roundtable with federal minister Rona Ambrose. And then later that evening, the premier's dinner. February twenty-second, I also attended another annexation mediation meeting. And February twentieth to the twenty-fourth inclusive in the evenings and during the Saturday and Sunday during the day, I was onsite at the Frost Moon Festival. Thanks very much to all the community volunteers that helped and all those people that attended. It was a great result and certainly appreciate very much the city of Grand Prairie support, both through the grant and also through the gift and kind support that the Parks Crew provided in terms of creating the, the ice surface. A pretty fantastic result, I think. And a lot of people were skating outside of hours and before the festival started and after the festival completed, there were lots of people using it. So I think that was great to see it get that good use. On February twenty-fifth, I had an interview here on behalf of a researcher who's working, sorry, with a researcher who's working on behalf of the Quebec government. They're doing research into communities and communities perceptions around fracking. And so it was interesting to see that they were in Grand Prairie because the view was that Grand Prairie is sort of a high-functioning community. And they wanted to know what makes some communities receptive and relatively comfortable with fracking processes as opposed to communities where there's a significant difference. Through the course of discussion, we covered a number of the different social factors that come in with resource-based economies. On the twenty-seventh, I attended the Downtown Association AGM. It was a pleasure to be there and join the Downtown Association Board members and certainly a pleasure to recognize the contributions of the award winners. Pure Home Design and Northern Alberta Institute, we certainly appreciate both their contributions to our downtown and the core of our community. Later that day, I attended a meeting of the Sport Council Steering Committee where we looked at potential draft bylaws for a future sport council. On the twenty-eighth, I was also, as with other members of council, at the information session on pavement quality. on Pavement Quality, and this really relates to the fact that the city of Grand Prairie is moving towards a system where we, rather than having a minimum standard for paving, which says that you have to at least do this, we're looking at doing site-specific engineering of pavement designs, which will ultimately lead to better, longer-lasting roads, and address some of the concerns that residents have noticed where roads seem to degrade much more quickly than they should. The ultimate, I guess, the simple thing was that poorly-designed and engineered roads that aren't appropriate for the type of surface that they're being laid on will wear out faster than roads that were built to a site-specific sort of level, and so I think that that's something that will be coming forward in the future in our standards. On the twenty-eighth, I was also at the airport for the arrival of the Air Canada Q four hundred plane, and it was fantastic to see this serving Grand Prairie, I think by, come this fall. Just about all of the routes from the two major carriers will be served by the Q four hundred, I believe WestJet is going to leave on one seasonal seven thirty-seven, but other than that, it'll all be Q four hundreds, so it's much faster, approximately fifteen minutes faster to Calgary than the previous Air Canada Dash Eight service, so good to see that, and the Q four hundreds also increase capacity over the Dash Eight service and the regional jet service that Air Canada had on before, so there'll be more seats available. Later that morning, I attended the Youth Vital Signs Conversation Cafe, which had a really diverse group of youth in the room to discuss the results of the Youth Vital Signs Project, the city of Grand Prairie was a funder of. The Community Foundation later that day released the report, and I have to say, council, that if you haven't had an opportunity, I'm sure it'll be appearing in your council mailbox soon. The reason that council chose to fund that was so that we would build some information about an important demographic for our community, so that we could use it in planning. I think it speaks very directly to what council's priorities, the next council's priority should be when it comes to budgeting, I think there's a lot of very useful information there, so it was a good investment on behalf of council. And later that afternoon, before I went back for the sort of official launch of the Youth Vital Signs, I was at the Franco-Albertan Flag Raising, my thanks to the local ACFA who organized this event, to Minister Wayne Drysdale who attended, and Reeve Bilprey who attended as well, and to the couple hundred, as Councilor Crokin mentioned, schoolchildren who attended, it was fantastic to see them here, and they're so appreciative of us recognizing their culture, really reminds me of how council and just through a simple act like providing that space on one of our flagpoles can really lend pride to an important part of our community. And I want to mention that as I was doing my recognition of the council members that were in attendance, I forgot Councilor Rice, and so I was looking over the sea of the kids, and Councilor Rice, my excuse is that I was so concerned about the French part that was coming up in my speech, that I forgot to look really closely as I went through the crowds, so my apologies. But with that, I believe we can call our meeting adjourned, thank you very much.